It's 5:30 and we're gonna change the order up Sunday this afternoon, or this evening. And so, uh, tonight will be the last time that our mayor pro tem, is mayor pro tem, and he's rolling off the council, which will be a sad day for all of us.
Yeah.
Remember your evaluations coming. But, so, we're gonna let him gavel in here in a little bit and start us off in our meeting. But before our meeting, I have something that's really special. There's a lot of people here, and many of you are here for this event. And so, I want to recognize someone tonight. It's an proclamation I want to read in it. I think it's a surprise to him, I think. It's a proclamation of recognition. We are here today to pay honor and celebrate the dedication and prestigious career of Coach Lon Reesman. And whereas Coach Reesman spent thirty-six years, thirty-six years, at Charlton State University enrolls of men's basketball coach for thirty-one years, athletic director for twenty-six years, and vice president for intercollegiate athletics for five years. And Coach is the longest tenured athletic director in Charlton State University, and the third longest across all of NCAA Division One. That's a real honor. In his career, Coach has seen forty-one NCAA playoff appearances, fourteen NCAA tournament regional championships, twenty conference tournament championships, fourteen season conference championships, and nineteen division championships. During the region in Division Two, Charlton was ranked in the national top twenty-five polls and qualified for the NCAA playoffs in every sport along the way, including the final four finishes in men's basketball and women's golf. And Coach Lon Reesman has six-hundred-and-ninety-one career wins, six-hundred-and-fifty-four at Charlton, which is the most wins by anyone in Charlton history, and the most wins by any active coach in Texas at any NCAA level. And Reesman led Charlton State out of the NIA ranks through NCAA Division Two from nineteen-ninety-four to two thousand and twenty, and has helped elevate Charlton to the highest level NCAA Division One with seventeen intercollegiate programs, dozens of coaches and staff, over five hundred student athletes. And Coach has been named the Coach of the Year thirteen times. They don't want to pass it around, yes? Including nationally three times, and was inducted into the Charlton Athletic Hall of Fame in two thousand and nineteen. And on behalf of the entire city council, I want to express my sincere appreciation to Lon for his exceptional service to athletics program, and students of Charlton State University and this community, and wish him much happiness and success as he begins the new chapter in his life, including serving up here. Therefore, I Doug Saven, Mayor of Steenville, Texas, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May fifteenth, as Coach Lon Reesman Day, and the City of Steenville, and urge all citizens, everybody needs to go on the website and do such, make a comment, urge all citizens and Stevens, and city employees to join me in congratulating Coach Reesman for his outstanding career with Charlton State University, and wishing him many continued years of happiness and service on the city council. Thank you.
I know it's, it'll be so big. Just call him boss.
All right. Well, it is five-thirty-three, and I'm gonna call this meeting of the city council to order. And Mr. Hasty, would you mind leading this into place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored to take this flag.
On this flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
And this evening, we have Mr. Work Maze from the Cowboy Church, Bevry County, here to lead the invocation, sir.
Proverbs, chapter one, beginning in verse one. The proverbs of Solomon, the son of David, king of Israel, to know wisdom and instructions, to discern the sayings of understanding, to receive instruction in wise behavior, righteousness, justice, and equity. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you, God, for this, our community. We thank you for these who care enough to put words into action, to come to lead, to help, and to guide. Father, we are told in James that if any lacks wisdom, in other words, if we don't know everything, we can ask, and you will give it abundantly. So, Father, upon these, our servants, would you bless them with wisdom, with guidance, and with instruction? And Father, may we, as this community, serve you, honor you, and glorify you, as we love you, God, and as we love our neighbor. Father, we do love you, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
We have a section every month, every meeting for general discussion for the citizens. I have one request, or any others besides the one? This one's from Bruce Delater. If you'll get up, you have three minutes. You can put a clock on it, can you watch the clock? Just give me a hard time. Give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, Bruce Delater, fifteen ninety-five Glenwood here in town. I served on the Citizens Committee concerning the new Steenville twenty fifty plan. And when I was looking at the agenda for tonight's meeting, I noticed a case that's coming up through P and Z regarding the changing of zoning from industrial to residential. And I was originally gonna address it during that case only, but I think it needs to be addressed in a broader context. I'm going to read from the plan that we just received. This is a quote. The city of Steenville offers approximately one point one million square feet of industrial space developed over forty-four properties, and is considered fully occupied. In comparison to select pure communities, Steenville ranks lowest in industrial properties, square footage, and availability rate. The industrial sector would be considered constrained. When I served on planning and zoning, I tried to keep industrial-zoned tracks intact. Most times I lost. I think once I won. But I, I think it's, it's confusing to me as to why a city that wants to grow and become economically more viable would piecemeal dismantle industrial-zoned land, especially a sizable parcel like we're talking about tonight. But I've also, as I say, addressed it in, in other venues. So, I, I don't know why we want to dismantle industrial-zoned land, especially when it's adjacent to the railroad, which is prime industrial property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There'll be a couple other agenda item changes. If you have your agenda, if you'll look on page two, for those who are looking at the full packet, under the general election issue, those up here and those that were in the election this last week have already been told this. But the county board of elections has not certified the election yet. They do that, what's the date?
Uh, May thirteenth, next Monday.
Monday the thirteenth. So, Monday the thirteenth, they'll certify. So, we can't do the election tonight and swear in until that happens. So, we're gonna have a specially called meeting, city council meeting, next week at five-thirty in this chambers for the purpose of doing that. So, we're gonna remove that tonight. And, and, but because of that, tonight, we have Gerald's here. Is Alan next here? Okay. And what about Dean? Is Dean here? Okay. Well, Gerald, you're invited. We have an executive session tonight. It's gonna be the only stuff that you'll have to deal with on the new council. So, you're invited to stay if you're interested in doing so. Okay, next item is a regular agenda. Consider approval of a mural on the city-owned property. Who's gonna handle that one?
Mr. Tressel.
Mr. Tressel.
I'm going to, like, rapidly pass this off. So, Ms. Finney came to me, oh, man, it's been, it's been several, it's been a couple months ago, and was talking to me about several Girl Scout projects that they were looking at doing in our community. And one of the things she presented to me was a mural, potentially on the trail located between Charlton Street and Collins Street. We have several retaining walls in that area. And so, we thought it would be a good idea to let those girls come and present that to y'all tonight, and tell y'all what it is they want to do. So, I'm gonna pass it off to these young ladies right here, and let them tell y'all what they want to do.
You'll give, give your name and your address. We'd love to hear from you.
My name is Amelia Finney. My address is ten sixty West Charlton Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I stand before you today to advocate the approval of a mural wall project proposed by the eighth-grade Girl Scouts. This initiative embodies the essence of community engagement, creativity, and empowerment. Here are compelling reasons why you should grant your approval. Community unity. The mural wall project serves as a platform to foster sense of unity and pride within our community. By allowing the Girl Scouts to express themselves through art, we are promoting and celebrating diversity. Youth empowerment. Empowering our youth is crucial for the future of our city. By approving this project, we are demonstrating our support for the creative endeavors of young individuals, and encouraging them to become active participants in shaping their community. Educational value. This project offers educational benefits by providing hands-on experience, artistic expression, teamwork, and project management for the Girl Scouts involved. It also serves as a valuable learning opportunity for all members of our community to appreciate and engage with art. In conclusion, I urge you to support the eighth-grade Girl Scouts in their endeavor to create a mural wall that will not only enhance the aesthetic appeal of our city, but also serve as a symbol of unity, empowerment, and community pride. Let us embrace the opportunity to champion the creativity and initiative of our youth. Thank you, thank you for your consideration.
My understanding is you have a, chosen a artist. Did this, right?
Thank you.
And she's from where?
She's from Austin.
She's from Austin, Texas. For y'all in the council, all of you, they have the packet of seeing the project, the recommendation. And I also received today an email with a link to her other projects, some of her other projects. She has a tremendous job, and I think it's a great idea. Is there actually action required tonight?
Yes, sir, if you guys would.
But it's not an ordinance, it's just an approval tonight.
Correct.
Just out of curiosity, what level in Girl Scouts are y'all right now?
Worked it, and we're bridging to become seniors.
And so, seniors is equivalent to what in the Boy Scouts?
Well, seniors is the last rank before you graduate.
So, the seniors then is the same as a what in the Boy Scouts for y'all?
Sounds like Eagle.
Like an Eagle Scout?
Yes.
So, you girls are working hard to do that, and this will be one of your projects to get there, so I-
This will be ours to get our civil, silver, silver award. And that ends on to go to the gold award, which is in depth the same as the Eagle Scout Award.
Well, I appreciate your willingness to do this for the city of Steenville. I want to recognize that here. Does anybody have a recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the mural by the Girl Scouts.
I second.
Well, we have everybody here second. So, I'm gonna say, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good job, ladies. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Is Brandon Huckabee here? He was supposed to be here tonight. Okay. If not, the next one is consider approval of a resolution renaming Harbin Drive. Y'all see the packet in there. We have in the package, you see a letter from Dr. Hurley. He and I met last week and asked how we could do this. What's the best process? I said, write a letter. And his recommendation is to rename the street to University Drive. Obviously, in the letter, he explains it well, what the issue is. And with that big gem that's gonna be there, the economic development in Steenville, Texas will be huge. I've had a couple of calls about the concerns, and the concerns I heard were related to, the ordinance refers to it being done immediately. And there's some people that have to change some issues, have to give the post office and so on, change post office on your checks, et cetera. And so, I'm gonna recommend that we consider that. Is there any kind of discussion about the issue?
Mr. Mayor, that even if you order the change immediately through the resolution, there's a process that we have to go through.
And how long does that process take?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. But we do have, there are notifications that have to go out to all the property owners along there, and make sure everybody's notified about the change. Then there's signage, and that's part of the actual street project we're doing now. So, it's gonna be a few months, you know, before.
Well, I, someone recommended, recommended to me that we just say that it's to be effective no sooner than a hundred and eighty days, or a hundred and twenty days, or something like that. So, where the process is, that was a recommendation made to me on the last call I had Saturday.
Yes, sir. I think part of this request, though, is to get some of that stuff done in time for the hundred and twenty-fifth celebration this fall.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments, concerns?
I guess, I would just ask, Jason, is there, is there any, 'cause the logistics of a homeowner or property owner having to go through this, because we force them to, is staggering to me. Every bill that you have, every loan that you have, everything you have is tied to that home address, or that property address. So, is there any way that the city can try to accommodate people, maybe put a punch list together on, on, on what they have to do? Because there's gonna be a lot.
I'm sure there's something, and we're happy to research that, and figure out how we can help, and, and all those kind of things. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. And so, we probably need to reach out to, like, the postmaster, because part of that process will be, will be through them on that.
Right. But that, and Doug and I talked about this, that's the easy thing.
Right.
The post office is the easy thing. It's Visa, MasterCard, Vive, what, you know, your phone service. It's those things that are gonna be the heartache, I think, for the folks that live on that, you know, on Harbin Drive, everybody on Harbin Drive.
Yes, sir.
So, it, it just seems like we should try to accommodate. I, I mean, I'm all in favor of doing this, no question about it.
I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you. Just define accommodate for me. I'm, I'm not.
Again, to me, it would be a punch list. Could we put together a punch list that said, hey, don't forget to think about this? You know, just a punch list of, of the stuff that they're gonna have to address in the next couple of months?
Sure.
To get everything, so that a year from now, or five months from now, they don't get, hey, you didn't pay the bill. Well, I never got the bill.
Right.
And so, now they've had service canceled, or stuff like that, you know, that's just-
Yes, sir.
And of course, I'm a, I'm a very cynical fellow about dealing with folks. So, but it just seems like we should try to accommodate them if there's, and there may not be any way. I don't know.
No, I, I, I think you're headed down a path that we can accommodate. Come up with some kind of document that, have you, have you thought about this, or, you know, these vendors make, you know, kind of some beware things, make sure, yes, sir, we can come up with something like that.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash?
Oh, seven.
Oh, seven.
Second. Have a motion, second. I'm just gonna make a comment before we vote, that I think we need to take Mark's advice, and if there, well, to get a date, and that date, because if we're starting the process, it's up to us to start, and when the process ends, it's whenever it ends. So, I think we ought to project that date, and if it's gonna be too soon, that we just kind of drag things on a little bit till we get people's accommodations as best as possible. So, just, just my comment. Okay. With all that in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is a public hearing, considering the voluntary annexation of property in response to petition requesting annexation by area landowners. Is that Steve?
Yes, sir.
How many of these things do you have tonight, Steve? Are you gonna take up half the minute again?
Well, trying to, yes, sir.
You're doing a good job of it.
Appreciate you kind of redirecting some of the interest off of this young lady. What an amazing job she did. Tough act to follow, so. So, we have an opportunity for annexation of ninety-two acres. This is on the north end of town. Take one oh eight out to twenty-three oh three, turn left. There's ninety-two acres there. We've been working with Law Paloma and Southwest Pigeon Road Development on a project that they want to bring to us in, actually, on the May P and Z agenda for a concept plan. So, they, we're requesting voluntary annexation. This is ninety-two acres. And then, if it is annexed into the city, this parcel will include a two-acre tract that is already in the city limits. So, the project will actually be for a ninety-four acre parcel. We do have a representative from Law Paloma here tonight. His name is Chris Toby. If you have any specific questions relating to the development, but staff would recommend that we favorably consider this request. There is a municipal service agreement in your packet that was drafted by Mr. Nick Williams in the Public Works Department, and of course, in conjunction with the developer. And with that, Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve. Jason and I met, have met with him twice, I think, Zoom calls, or by phone is in call. It seems to be a pretty exciting project. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash O dash?
Eleven.
Eleven, as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is approval of a release of pipeline easement. Is that Nick? I don't know why you guys sat down first, Steve. That's Sarah's fault. She could've coordinated a little better with you, but.
Glad to be here.
We're glad you're here.
Yes, sir. Likewise. The, when the stable development was put together, the layout for the easements that you see, and I think it's on page thirty-four of your agenda packet, there simply was a utility easement and right-of-way easement there. And when the stable development built, they simply put in their own sewer and dedicated the right-of-way in that development. And so, the city has no need for those easements whatsoever. And so, we fully support abandonment of the easements as shown in your agenda packet.
Questions for Nick. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we release the easements as requested.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Before y'all leave, y'all want to get a picture with y'all up here, and us take, us behind you, it'd be a great idea. So, we're gonna need someone with a camera. Sarah, you got one? Okay. Yeah, we'll do that here after the next item. Oh, you're ready? You got a camera. Well, come on. Y'all stand right here, and let's all get together and take pictures. These girls are doing a good job tonight.
All of you.
All of y'all, come on out here. Stand right here. Come stand right here in front. Make sure we got there before y'all had to leave. Okay, next item, planning and zoning commission. Steve, is that you again?
Yes, sir.
Of course.
This is RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three. Mr. Chad Williams and his wife are requesting a rezonal property located at seventeen oh nine West Grossbeck. This is in the South Side Edition, block eight, lot nineteen. As Mr. Delauter mentioned, this property is currently zoned industrial. The future land use is single-family. What we're wanting to do is rezone it to one point five, so they can build a roughly sixteen-hundred square foot home on the property. The lot has the dimensions of fifty-five by one hundred, roughly. And so, the R one point five zoning allows construction of single-family homes on lots with the fifty by one hundred dimension. The zoning for this area is industrial, as mentioned earlier. That was probably from the comprehensive plan and actions from that, which was adopted in two thousand and eight. But the future land use, even in two thousand and eight, was designated as a single-family. So, we're, we're in alignment with what the comprehensive plan calls for now. And then, of course, as we move forward with the new comprehensive plan, we'll be transitioning to a form-based code. And I'm pretty sure this area was designated as more of a, a housing area than it would be for an industrial. So, just wanted to address that question. And with that, be, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Steve.
I know, I go back about this all the time when we talk about industrial. I know when we were going through industrial zoning, in the beginning, we, we set that in place because it's the easiest to change, correct?
Correct.
I mean, so that's, this is, the single-family residence as it looks is common for the area. It's surrounded by single-family residents, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Single-family and multifamily. In industrial, it has not necessarily the easiest to change, but it has the largest number of permitted uses. So, more uses fall into that area, something that if we left it that way, then multiple- uses could be considered, whereas we're changing it now to where it'd just be single-family. But for the area, I believe it is the highest and best use.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else?
So Steve, on the new plan that won yet to be adopted, was the consideration during that process to try to scoop industrial out more to the edges of town and get it away from the more central part of town?
Yes, sir. We're also, with that new plan, trying to find a way to get student housing as close to Tarleton campus as we can, so if we can push out to the peripheral for the industrial type zoning. But again, this is gonna be more of a form-based, so it'll be what fits the area more than it is, trying to make it fit into a certain box for the type of zoning that we have it designated as now. That's gonna be a transition that probably takes a year or two to get to, because we have to change our land use regulations. But under the current plan, I think this fits the needs of the community. Obviously, we're behind on housing, is what we're finding from the comprehensive plan, so I think this fits well with what we're trying to accomplish within the community. The industrial zoning, of course, next to the railroad track, I'm sure made sense years ago when there was maybe more rail activity, but that's not really what we're seeing in today's needs for the community.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, we'll enter into a public hearing on project case number RZ 2024-003. Would anybody like to come and speak in favor of the project? Anybody like to come and speak in opposition to the project? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bruce, the letter 1595, Glenwood, I'd just like to reiterate what I said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anybody else? Hearing nothing else, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance rezoning of the property located at 1709 West Grosse Spec Parcel, R33605, Block 8, Lot 19, the South Side Edition of the City of Stevensville, Erap County, Texas, from industrial to single-family residential district, R15. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, do we need to do the ordinance number?
The ordinance number is 2024-012. Is that correct?
I'm so old, I can't read, so, hang on a second. I move that we undo just...
Okay. Move that we approve ordinance number 2024-0-12.
Have a motion second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Steve. I just had to give you a hard time, you know that.
Thanks, sir.
Tourism Visitors Bureau, do we have, who's gonna present tonight? There you are.
So at the committee meeting, we had a representative from the National Ramblay Show and Sale, Lee Muns. He's unable to make it again today, but he presented his hot funds application to council requesting $5,000, not six, sorry for the typo there, for the National Ramblay Show and Sale. This event will take place June 17 through 22 in 2024 at the Tarleton State University Animal Plant Science Center and Arena. There is an expected attendance of 150 people from all over the country, all staying in local hotel establishments for four to five nights. A room block of 30 rooms is already reserved at the La Quinta, and if approved, the hot funds granted would be used to pay for the facility and advertising. Councilwoman Dervy made the motion to forward the hot funds application to full council with a positive recommendation and passed unanimously. Do y'all have any questions about the National Ramblay Show and Sale?
Questions? We're all pretty excited about it. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the hot funds in the amount of $5,000...
It's five.
For the National Ramblay Show and Sale as presented.
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
The next item, a hot funds application from the Stevensville Music Club was presented. Representative Elaine Smith came and talked to council. This event requested $6,000. An event will take place November 8 through 9, 2024, at the Stevensville Rec Hall and First Baptist Church. The expected attendance is 200 people with about 10 people staying in local hotels. If approved, the hot funds granted would be used to fund musical talent, advertising, food for the event, and more. Councilwoman Dervy made the motion to deny the hot funds request. Maddie Smith seconded, and all in favor to move to council with recommendation to deny for this year. That's what I sound like.
Any discussion? Do I hear, do we have to motion since the county committee did not recommend it?
Yes, I have to have a motion.
Okay.
Motion second.
We have a motion then?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion we deny the hot funds request in the amount of $6,000 to the Single Music Club.
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Reisman, Coach Reisman.
Yes, sir.
May the 16th, is that the date, I think?
I don't know. Darren, I'd like to have Darren come up.
Everybody needs to make a big deal about that. Call, I give you a cellphone, you call him that day.
We all wear lawn masks.
There you go. I think we're at the basketball games.
I brought the computer up here and everything just so I can go through this, because I figured Mark's gonna have some questions on his last night.
Just keep going.
So.
Just get it done. Get it done.
So what you have before you is an agreement with La Terra Studio out of Dallas to do two different phases for our NYC Field Number Three. The first phase is a concept, design, and estimating, so that we kind of know a ballpark price of what we're getting into before we get into our design development. So the first phase is $7,500. Then we move into Phase Two, it's gonna be design, development, construction documents, floodplain documentation, which we're required to do because of where we're building, bidding, construction observation, and then our TDL and state documentation that we have to do. And that comes out to another 45,5. So the total price for the whole package is $53,000 even.
So you're asking for the project to be one vote on the whole project?
One vote on the whole project, it's all one thing. The reason he's put it into two is he wants council and committee to have time to review the design and make sure that we're headed in the right direction before we go into design development.
Any questions for Darren?
So when's the ball field construction gonna start? That's all I wanna know, Darren.
Man, I'm hoping we're playing on it next year is the hope, so hopefully we can get through this thing pretty fast.
You're the man.
So we kind of know what we want to see in this next ball field. We know the things we like and don't like based on what we have now, so we're hoping to be able to fit a few things in that'll enhance kind of the viewer experience too, and get the kids a little bit nicer and stuff, so we know where we're headed in the future with every other ball field.
Thank you.
I wanna make a comment real fast. Darren, you know, I've spent a lot of time with the park and you've done a great job. I mean, everything looks fantastic. I really think this is the next step to really take us above and beyond where we've been. The addition of this field with the improvements that you've done on our current ones, I think is just an amazing job, so I just wanted to tell you I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Second.
Well, in honor of Mark leaving, I'm going to do what he always says, so, what's the pleasure of the committee?
It's the whole council in this case.
Of the council, yes. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the services agreement with La...
La Terra.
La Terra as presented.
Next.
Have a motion second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That was fun. Mr. McClintock?
Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met 16th of April, had a couple items on the agenda, and I'm gonna invite Mr. Williams to come up and talk. The first item was for a professional services agreement with Biggs Matthews, and this is just the culmination, hopefully, Nick, we're culminating, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the culmination of the permitting process out at the landfill, and we talked about it before, this is something that buys us a lot of time, buys the citizens of Stevensville's time and space at the landfill for their convenience. So, Mr. Williams, full of scene.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that good synopsis. So this service was absolutely anticipated in the budget, and so we've actually budgeted the exact amount for this finalization and culmination of this process. We had a conversation with our consultant earlier today, and we're gonna be submitting that response, what I hope is the last response to TCEQ's comments. We've had some conversations with them, and so we feel like we're on the right track. Although the state has 30 days to respond, I would tell you 60 days, I feel comfortable before we get the thumbs up to move forward.
Any discussion, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the amendment of professional services agreement with Big Matthews as presented.
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Second item on the agenda for our committee this past month was about the Harbin Drive project and other change order. This one dealing with the medians, several options were presented. At the end of it, the committee voted three to one to bring forward to council a change order in the amount of $591,770, and I'm gonna let you tell us what that is.
Yes, sir. That, along University Drive, there'll be colored concrete and a brick stamp that'll be incorporated in all of the medians in, from Washington up to the Robert J. Glasgow Loop. So in the grand scheme of things, I think this is a fantastic move, certainly for this community and for university, although I'd never like to spend more money than we have to, but it is going to look phenomenal.
My dad and I were driving, he's 94, came to visit, and we're driving up Harbin Drive today, and the first thing he said was, how are y'all gonna keep people from jumping the curb? And I mentioned the rusty-colored concrete, he said that'll make a big difference.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's this $591,000, which we did not have budgeted for, in the lot. I mean, have we thought of other options, like maybe AstroTurf or something? Because that's what Vegas does, and hospitals in the Metroplex have it, is there greenery?
Yes, ma'am. So we've run through a lot of different scenarios, and we presented a couple, I know, at the committee meeting, and so we did look at options. Certainly, we wanted to stay away from those that require that perpetual maintenance. There's always a return on investment when we can put it in once and leave it alone. But we did look at different options to just put in the colored and brick-stamped concrete in areas that were over five feet wide. And so there were different options that certainly were discussed. I don't know that AstroTurf was ever brought up.
I mean, since the eight-to-ten-year lifespan, that's probably much cheaper than standard concrete, but it's just something that...
Right, and so we're trying to look at the lifespan of the concrete itself, and so it's, like anything, it's always a big cost upfront, but does end up paying for itself in the end.
Anybody else?
So I'll just, hold on, go ahead.
I have a question about the, when you're sitting on the south side of Washington, getting right across the street.
Yes, sir.
On to University Drive.
Yes, sir.
That, the lanes don't line up if you're wanting to go straight. I mean, if I don't turn my car a little bit, I'd ruin right smack into that median. Now, that was a curious design for me.
And so the, part of this project, and I'm glad you brought this up, because I've been meaning to, I've been wanting to say this publicly, those lanes are going to be restriped so that they will line up to go directly through that intersection.
Maddie, I understand what you're saying on the turf here, because I've been involved with a lot of turf, and I get to give you some ideas about turf. I can remember getting called from the police at our, at the university, telling me they're having a barbecue on the 50-yard line, on our turf, and it's on fire. So I can just imagine going up Harbin Street right now, and some of the students are having a barbecue right in the middle of what you're talking about, and, I mean, or somebody, we've had fireworks out there before, and something, we should, fireworks kind of didn't go where they're supposed to go, and landed on turf last fall, and my turf is, the turf is on fire again. So I can just see somebody throwing a cigarette or something out there, and all of a sudden, it's pretty flammable. You gotta be real careful on it, so...
She was just a thought.
Yeah, I understand. It does look nice, it does look nice, I agree, but I don't know, I don't know if it can be practical or not, but you're right at the university, and things happen at the university, as we all know.
What's your point?
My point is, concrete's not gonna go on fire.
If it does, we're all in trouble. All of us, isn't that last thing? So does this add any additional time? And since we're talking about time, what's the timeline for the...
You know, I had occasion to visit with one of Mr. Mills today, and so this contract does add 60 days, or I'm sorry, this change order does add 60 days to the contract, and like a lot of things, they were reluctant to give me the final, but he did say, no one wants this project completed more than I do, and I said, well, I promise you, I'm a close second. So I would anticipate that it'll be absolutely complete before the next semester rolls around, and I feel very comfortable saying that.
I'm writing that down, Nick.
You know where I live, yes, sir.
When we have the ribbon cutting, I want Mr. McClintock there to help cut the ribbon.
You got it, yes, sir.
Unless something's burning somewhere.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the change order number eight for the medians on Harbin Drive as presented.
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I propose to him on behalf of the Public Works Department, appreciate your service and leadership.
Appreciate it. Absolutely. That ends the committee report for Public Works, sir.
Ms. Harris had to leave early today, so everybody got a copy of the financial report? Anybody have any questions? I'll let Jason answer those. Don't smile at me like that. You got justice still here.
Questions? I'm asking to Jason.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thanks, sir, we don't have to have a vote on it, so let it go. Next item is Mr. Sanford.
Sir.
I want everybody to know, I bought a cowboy hat to wear with him to the Las Vegas...
I'm finally rubbing off on ya. Most people I rub off on, go get a shot afterwards.
I got chingles already.
So, hey, how are y'all? May 7th, I always like to do this day in history, and so if this is your birthday, Gary Cooper's birthday was today, 1901. We had, if you were, we'll go through generations here. If you watched Welcome Back Cotter, do you remember Epstein? Robert Hedges, his birthday was today, he's already passed away. If you're a music fan, Paul Leary, the guitarist for, this is one of Mark's favorite groups, Butthole Surfers. His birthday was 1957. It's also, I know Justin is our youth here, or this might even be Bob, since, if you're a big YouTuber, YouTube sensation, Mr. Beast, his birthday, 1998, was today. So some events that happened, this are kind of fun, 1718, the city of New Orleans was founded. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks to Mark.
Yeah, and then this one, this one is, yeah, he was here. He told me to say a couple of other things that I'm not going to say, Mr. Mayor, so we will...
Thank you.
I'm gonna have a little discretion. 1867, this is a little bit of an ironic thing, the guy who the Peace Prize was named after, Alfred Nobel patented dynamite, which was kind of cool, also was good for J.J. Walker. 1914, US Congress established Mother's Day, so we get to thank everybody for that from 1914. A couple more. If you're a big music fan, again, I always like to do music. 58 years ago, y'all know that song, Monday, Monday, from the Mamas and the Papas? 58 years ago.
You de-hummed it up here a lot.
Monday, even on Tuesday, it's great.
I probably can sing it.
2012, this is a cool one, and David, I know you'll appreciate this one more than anybody. Paleoclimatological research claimed that dinosaur flatulence may have warmed the Earth. That's something I know you can get behind.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you. And then this was also a good one, my last one, 2018, Iran contrafigured Oliver North announced that he was, that he would be the president of the NRA, so it turns out all that work in the 80s paid off, so that was good. He knows about arms and so forth.[1729.62] I wanted to talk about some very cool things here. First of all, I wanted to, on behalf of the CETA board and others in this community, thank Justin, Bob, and Mark for your service. A lot of people don't know quite what goes on, and all the things that you do. This is not just a once-a-month Tuesday, first Tuesday meeting that you come in here and hear a few things and vote on. For those that don't know, they spend hours and hours and hours daily doing a lot of things, as do all of their other colleagues, and we're greatly appreciative of all that you do, do, that you do. Back to the dinosaur flatulence, once again, still on my mind. But we do thank you so much for all of the work that you do, and I won't go over everything that you do, but I do want you to go away with this thought that, at least from our standpoint on economic development, and by the way, this is Economic Development Week, as declared by the governor of Texas, and so it's always cool to kind of point out some of the things. So over the last twenty-seven months, twenty-six months, we've opened thirty-six stores or restaurants or other things in this community, thirty-six businesses in the last twenty-six months, and you guys have all been a part of that. And we thank you for your role. It may be small in some, it may be large in others, but in all things, you're considering some kind of detail that goes along with opening these businesses, and that's a big deal for our community. We're continuing to grow. And I think that in the last couple of years, I won't say if you've served longer, but in the last couple of years, certainly, this is probably the most prosperous time in Stephenville's history. And I think that we're going to continue that, but we would not have been able to, we didn't have good leadership, and so we're very thankful for all that you guys do. Your counsel to us on the side, coming to different things that we have, being there for us and allowing us to throw some things off on you, and you telling us what landmines might exist, and helping us find solutions to get to the other side, and so we're very appreciative of that. With all those positions, one of the cool things is that we have been able to create a lot of jobs for our students here, our future workforce and our existing workforce as well. We remain very, very low in our unemployment, which is a good sign when you're in the town, it's a bad sign when you're trying to recruit new business, but at the same time, we know that we need to fill those roles in the future. And so we continue to work on that, and as you know, that we've been talking about for some time, our career club. And I'm gonna show you some things here on some pictures that you guys, we've talked about it for about nine months. But there's some, there's about, we had a nine-month program of students. We wanted to do something a little differently, and I've talked about this before, but again, if you don't remember, we aren't just trying to get people ready to have a job. What we forget about is that there's a disconnect between going to school, and then you get out of school, and the next step is there, and we've always put those that didn't want to go to college in this blue-collar deal and saying, "Y'all are all going in manufacturers, and all you white-collar kids are gonna go to college, and that's what you're gonna do and get those kinds of white-collar jobs," and that's just not the case anymore. In some cases, our white-collar, our blue-collar jobs, our white-collar jobs, they're very equal. I mean, in fact, I mean, you can go to some of these, even fast-food restaurants, or QSRs, as we call them, and make just as much money as you can at some of our industrial places, then that's gonna be attractive to some people. And so we need to have a situation where we forget about what that end job is just for a moment, and let's get our people excited about working. Our generation, I'll say my generation, and you can include yourself or not in that, but we did a disservice to our kids in that we wanted to do so much for them that we made it easier on them, and so they were not as prepared for the workforce as we wanted them to be. You'll see some of the pictures up on the screen as they continue to, and they'll go by themselves, you don't have to fend for them. But we started with a dinner back in September, and then we have taken them to five of our industry partners with tours, and they got to experience what it was like to see some of these different places. They got to see how clean it was. You know, nobody really teaches, and you guys can remember yourself, nobody really teaches what it's like to work in some of these places. If you think about many of them, you think you're still gonna come out with soot, or with cotton, or with whatever, there is sandpaper, all different things on you, and come out looking like an animal, and that's not the case. We finished it up just this last Friday with a career academy where we taught them different things. We had the workforce solutions, folks out of the Metroplex, they were our partners, as was the high school, and we started to go through and teach them different skill sets that these folks told us they needed over the course of time. And I will tell you that in every single case, that our industry leaders, and you can ask them yourselves and follow up with if you want, but they said that of all the people that they host over the course of any given time, from any place, any school district, any other groups all over the country, ours were the best behaved, the best, most inquisitive, the most polite, and the most ready for the workforce of anybody else they've ever had. And that's a tribute to this program, but it's a tribute to a lot of people that participated in this program. So it's not just something that we've talked about here once a month, every week, or the first Tuesday of the month. This is something that's real. Thirty-six students were involved with this this year on our beta program at Stephenville High School. Five of them already have interviews with different people across town, and the others are going to have those that send us schools out, and they're gonna start working in our, and being a part of our workforce, guys. Jason Ripley, this is just this morning, or just the other day, told us, he said, "I have never had anybody actually stand up across the table and shake my hand whenever our interviews or our conversations were done." And our people are doing that. They're looking at them in the eyes. I don't have forty-year-olds that do that, and we've got seventeen-year-olds doing it, and we're getting them ready, because these guys are excited about putting a little jingle in their pocket and getting excited about being a productive part of our workforce. They're gonna be in roles that you guys have right now before long, because they're gonna get excited about making this community better and stronger. They're also, we're teaching them skills, they're gonna make them better husbands and wives, better fathers and mothers, and better brothers and sisters, and better everything, and that's important also. It's not just about what their end job is. That's something that they'll compete with on who they hire. It's about making them ready and excited about being in the workforce, and so that's good. Anyway, we finished the first year on Friday with our career academy. This program has been nominated by the Texas Economic Development Council for Workforce Excellence Award, and we are now going to be, I think it's next Monday, we're presenting it to about four or five other school districts as well, because those are people that serve our area, and while also, we can't just have our own, Stephenville's great, and Stephenville High School did a great job of partnering with us, but there are opportunities to get folks beyond just the school district here, and get them in here, and provide more of a pipeline for workers for these businesses here in town. Like I said, in about five years, we've created about twenty-five hundred jobs. That's on top of what was already here, and it was already tough to fill positions, so we're not stopping creating jobs, so we've got to make sure we have a workforce that's ready to be put into place. And we're gonna try to recruit some more, aren't we, sir?
We'll come back with some success.
Two weeks, and hopefully have some more for you on that one. Any questions? Again, Justin, Bob, Mark, thank you for your service. We appreciate you very much.
Thanks for the work you did on this project.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item's consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent as presented.
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, comments for city manager.
Mr. Mayor, council, as you mentioned earlier, next week, we'll have a special council meeting on Tuesday, the fourteenth, at five-thirty. City offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty-seventh, in observance of Memorial Day. That next weekend will be Mula Fest. Everybody come out. Doug Montgomery's put together a good show for us all summer, but for this event, he'll have the Bellamy Brothers, Gary P. Nine, and a Jerry Jeff Walker tribute band, so should be a fun time. Thank you.
Justin.
Mr. Mayor, it has been a pleasure to serve with you on the council. I have, well, I can say it's been real, and it's been fun, but I don't know if it's been real fun, but it's certainly been an eye-opening experience for the new members of the council that'll be joining. I wish you the best of luck. I wish you the ability to discern and to see beyond today's problems and what it is and where we're leaving this community over the next decades, as opposed to what feels good right now. I know that this council is gonna be facing a lot of really, really tough decisions in the coming months as budget approaches, and so with that, I wish you the best of luck, and I have every bit of confidence that this community will be in better hands because of it. So thank you all for your service.
Long.
Mayor, I think I goofed. I thank you and the council for their proclamation of recognition tonight. I'm very grateful, and I love this community, and I appreciate that very much.
You open the county doors, and then I'm here. I moved, I moved, I've lived at least half my life in Erazo County in Stephenville, and when we moved back into the city limits, I wanted to do something that I could kind of give back to the city. So I signed up to become a council member, and so I've done that for two years. I've really enjoyed it, but I also would like to make note of, our city manager seems to be doing a fantastic job. I've always appreciated, I complained the other day, my wife and I found an unknown street to us in Stephenville that has a dog leg left, and then there's about a twenty or thirty-foot embankment on the other side of the street. So if you drive like I do, you're running a risk of winding up on the Bosque River Trail about a long time. Anyway, Jason got something started on that. I'm gonna just move down the table. Randy Thomas and I have known each other more years than I want to even admit, and it's been a pleasure working with you and the council on making sure we're doing things correctly by, for example, not saying, "So moved."
You usually follow that, not always.
Next, when I was in, when I, early in my career at Tarleton, I operated the concession stand, and so I wanted to find out something about accounting, so I could keep track of all the money that we were making. And, you know, so I took two freshman accounting courses. I learned more in two years about accounting from Justin than I did that whole time, so I appreciate that. The guy next to me, I, there's nothing I could really say. He may not agree with everything, but we've known each other, I was already here when he came, so when you laud his career at Tarleton, you're forgetting somebody who'd been there about fifteen years before you came. We worked, we've worked together in athletics. I was a faculty athletics representative for several years. He and I worked together to get that D-one stuff going, and, but I've always appreciated Lon, and we've always had a good friendship. The mayor, when I got on the council, I didn't, I didn't know you personally.
You had heard some things about.
Over the two years, I've grown to know you, enjoy you, think of you as a friend, and I hope it's vice versa. Matty, you're the one that's always coming in here, trying to find people who will serve them, committees or boards like that. If I can make it long enough, I'll be more than happy to do something. Now, David Baske, I've known, I've known David quite a while also, and we, well, we've played together, we've worked together some. And lastly, I want to just say something about Sarah down there. She has been excellent city secretary. She's been patient with somebody who doesn't know how to fill out forms, and has to bring them in, pick it up, take it back and stuff, but anyway, I'm, I plan on being around. I hope Dean Parr has a good run at this particular situation, and I'm, sorry I took up so much time, I was, I looked at Jeff over there. Anyway, all right, but I appreciate all of your friendship and work ethic, and like I said, I'll be around, Matty, you know, I'll probably get bored sitting at the house.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you.
All right. Well, first, May twelfth through eighteenth is National Police Week, so be sure to thank your police officers when you see them around town, not just the one-finger sleuth that gets some days. And then also on May fifteenth is the fifth annual Erazo County Peace Officer Memorial Service at the Bertham Amphitheater, I believe it's at five-thirty? Seven, way off there. I'll be really early.
Well, you can be early.
I'll be early. I also would like to congratulate all the two thousand twenty-four graduates from Tarleton, Stephenville, and the surrounding communities, and having Mother's Day and Memorial Day to everyone as well, and to Justin, Bob, and Mark. Thank you so much for serving with us and being a friend and helping us when, as a new council mayor, y'all are more than inviting and helpful, and never make fun of me for my repetitive questions, and I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Justin, I've enjoyed, of course, years of friendship with you, and being a part of this council with you has been amazing. You're gonna be missed, not only by me, but everybody on council and the city as a whole. Thank you for everything you've done. Bob, you were entertaining every day. Sure gonna, sure gonna mess you up here, but like you said, we know each other outside here, and I'll see you around. Mark, you've taught me to always read a little deeper and ask more questions, so I appreciate that, your leadership and you took up here. It's something that I could, I can never thank you enough for, so I appreciate everything you've done for us, for the city, for everybody, so thank you. Congratulations to the people that are coming on, the new council members. I know we'll address that next week. Mayor, congratulations to your reelection as well. And my son Gavin won election for the student council, so I'd say congratulations to him too, so, but that said, thank you very much.
I'd like to just repeat a thanks for the leadership from Justin, Bob, and Mark, their years, and hopefully they'll still be around for us to reach out to and still use their, benefit from their experience and wisdom as we move forward. But I want to thank those three guys for their service and leadership.
So a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Steve Killen and Robert Turk agreed to take a meeting that was probably a long ways outside their normal day-to-day activities. And they did it because it's just who they are. And I want to tell you, Steve, and you can pass along to Robert, from the other side of that meeting, it was meaningful, it was impactful, it was informative, so thank you for that. About the same time that was happening, Chief Harris, Chief Harris agreed to help a group of ladies in town that were, that were looking for some information, and again, he certainly didn't have to to do that outside of the scope of his day-to-day activities, I'm sure, but he agreed to help them out because that's just who he is. And I'll tell you, chief, that's exactly what those girls were after, and they're working that list right now, so thank you, sir. I bring up these three guys tonight because to me, they are shining examples of the good people we have here in Stephenville, people that are willing to go above and beyond just to help out. And we're lucky to have them, so thank you, guys. And to my colleagues up here and those I've worked with in the past, I think that the relationships that are formed here, the friendships that blossom from that, they're, they're long-lasting, they're impactful, they're meaningful, they're important, and that's because they're forged through common experience. And I hope that's what we've developed here. I certainly, it has been my distinct pleasure working with each one of you. I wish you nothing but the best as you move forward. And really, tonight, for me, is about thanking the people of Stephenville. Everybody up here serves at the will and pleasure of the electorate, and I've always tried to keep that front of mind doing this. I hope it showed. Multiple times now, you all have, you have granted me the privilege, and that's exactly what it is. This is the highest of honor and privilege to serve here as your representative. I've told a lot of people over the years that this job has been a continual blessing in my life, so you guys have blessed me, and for that, it seems that thank you is inadequate, given what I've received. But from the bottom of my heart, I thank, I thank you for the opportunity to serve here. Thank you. And then just because I can, I'm gonna editorialize. This job, like every other, has highs and lows. The difference in this job is the lows are written about in long form on social media platforms. They're out there forever for anybody and everybody to see, and they keep cropping up time and time again. So no need for me to discuss those. Y'all go chase the dandelions on your own. The acme of this job for me is the opportunity it presents to, let me sit back and take a long, hard look at, and really try to understand Stephenville yesterday, and then try to mesh that together with Stephenville today, and then step back and try to vision Stephenville tomorrow. That's very exciting. I've been through that process. My assessment, for what it's worth, is that great things lie on the near horizon for Stephenville, Texas, great things. My belief is with Mayor Savine, this returning council, Mr. King, his team of city employees, with those folks holding the reins here, I have a high level of confidence those great things will come to pass. In fact, I expect that they will. You listening? And the reason I expect them to happen is some people look out the window on the landscape, and what they see are challenges and obstacles. Other people look out that same window, and what they see is our opportunities. In my experience doing this job, I can tell you, this building is full of opportunity seekers. So I'm encouraging you all and you all to reach out, grab hold, make it happen. Make those great things come to pass for all of us. And again, to those in town who have supported me, thank you so much for the chance to dance. It's been a blast, and I'm gonna leave you with my never-ending prayer, and that is that God would bless, continue to bless... continue to bless Steenville, Texas, everyone who lives and works here, all to his glory. With that, I will say amen and adios.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I want to address three folks that are here. Justin Hasky, I remember when I called you and asked you to run for council and you looked at me cross-eyed. I had to go to your daddy to get him to push your arm a little bit. When my wife, who was, in my opinion, the greatest person I've ever met, when Justin came out of college, I remember he was a little kid, and he came out of college and she got, helped work with you some at, at Boucham Morgan Young. And I remember on her deathbed, I asked her the question, you know, we had some issues with financing and so on, I said, I said, "What do I do with all this?" And I've told you this story, but I'll tell the rest of the world. She said, "Let Justin handle it." And I said, "Why, gee, I don't trust anybody more than him." So I appreciate what you've done, your friendship, we've developed a good friendship, I think, over the last few years. And what you brought to council is, when, before you came, I was able to text my wife and say, "Sherilyn, tell me about," and you've asked that question and you had the answer before I even questioned it now, so I appreciate your help here. You have done a lot for the city council. I mean, I'm impressed and I appreciate your hard work. You have a booming business that's taken off and I understand you're leaving council and why you've done that, but I thank you for your service to this, this community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Bob, you're right, I hadn't, I've seen you basketball games for years, I've been on center court for a long time watching this guy scream and holler and slam his foot down. I didn't, I'm gonna say that, he's a Christian. And so I didn't get to know you until you ran for council and literally I asked a few people to tell me about this guy. And what they told me was he was an intellectual. And I said, "Really?" And what I've found from staff is that that's exactly the way that you're described, you take it seriously, you read, you ask questions and you have good questions, and I appreciate that. You've given leadership here, you keep everything light, you know, and that can be good for us as well, because sometimes we take ourselves too serious and I appreciate your service to this city.
Thank you very much.
And I, and I'm sure we will put you on a committee here real soon. Mark, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you. You know, it's, gosh, eight years now together and then two years off, or one year off, I can't remember.
One year off.
So we're, I guess for nine years now, we've known each other. And I can tell you and tell the citizens out there, there is nobody, nobody in my fourteen years or so on council that's spent the time and effort that you spend on getting ready for council. Your leadership, you will be, as mayor pro tem, hard to replace, but as the committee chair that you are at particular public works, I've never seen anything done as well as you. You understand it, you work hard with it, you're not a yes man to the city staff, at the same time you bring solutions. And I want everybody here to know, there will be a hole on that end of the table that's gonna be hard to fill and we appreciate, I appreciate you more than that, anything I can ever say. If I could grab you and chain you right there the next week, I'd do that, and then two weeks after that, and two weeks after that. But thank you for your service and for, most of all, for your friendship and what you've given the city of Steenville.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Two other items, we have created a mayor's youth council and there's an application process, a lot of it starts with what y'all did. And so you're right, we need to start bringing up our next leadership for the city of Steenville. So if you're, get with Sarah on issues, it's on the website, the application process, taking anybody from the Erazo County that wants, any student that wants to come and participate. And hopefully we'll be discussing these kinds of issues and one of the purposes for it is not only to train the students how to get ready to be on council or to serve in government, but also for us to get their perspective on issues. Sometimes we miss that group of folks. And so as we've reached out to Tarleton over the last several years, now we're gonna reach out one step down from that into our high school group, so if you're interested in applying for that, please do so. Our first meeting will be sometime after the first of the school year, so September sometime. And so we're looking forward to a large participation in that. Last thing I have is, we have, I've nominated, and Judge Huckabee did as well, Kenny Weldon for the Brazos River Authority Executive Board. And I got a call today, we'll have another conversation tomorrow with the governor's office on the appointment, potential appointment for him to be on the DRA. Just for your information, Kenny is an engineer, was mayor for six years, I guess, and he is a, works in the water area, and I've got a story the other day I'll just tell you. I think his grandfather was involved in Possum Kingdom Lake Dam in the beginning of the Brazos River Authority. So he's, hopefully he'll get appointed at that from the governor's office before too long. So with that, in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernice, Texas Codes annotated in accordance with Section 551.071, Consultation with an Attorney, and Section 551.072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property. Afterwards, we will come back here and talk about what we discussed, if we have a motion, if not, we'll adjourn after that. We'll see y'all, so don't, don't, don't all hint and leave, y'all have to stay here till we get back.
Are we hot in?
It wasn't me. It was my sister.
It is seven.
She loves you.
We have a seven twelve to call back into session. There is no items discussed and voting on and with that the agenda is complete. So at seven twelve we will send a adjourned.